At just around 8:30 a.m., we're in Carson, we're in the community center at 8:51 East Williams Street in Carson City. Could we have a call to order, please?
Good morning.
Kathy, or Susan.
Supervisor Bowden.
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Here.
Supervisor Shirk.
Here.
Mayor Crowe.
Here.
We have a quorum.
In lieu of an invocation today, would you please stand with me and let's have a moment of silence for Deputy Sheriff Carl Howell. We're now on item five, public comment. Is there any comment now? We'll have public comment as we go through it and at the end as well.
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Public comments in order.
I have an email public comment, and I'll read it into the record. Dear Board Members, my name is Stephen David, and I, as my family, live in Carson City. I am writing you with great sadness on the death of Deputy Carl Howell of the Carson City Sheriff's Department. Not only was he a local deputy, but he is and will always be a United States Marine. Both of these careers were volunteered for. This man was a great American who was willing to stand up for the people of our town as well as the people of the world. Last week when duty called, this man stood up and confronted a bully who threatened the helpless and weak. A woman and small children needed his help, and this man was there to do what he was trained to do. When Deputy Howell was confronted by the gunman, he did not hide. He drew his weapon and he killed the assailant. His quick action most probably saved the lives of the women, of the woman, children, and the other deputy on the scene. Deputy Howell is the best example of law enforcement as well as the United States Marine Corps. I would ask that the Carson City Board of Supervisors work with Governor Sandoval to name the Carson City bypass the Deputy Carl Howell Memorial Freeway, Carson City Sheriff's Office, and the U.S. Marine Corps. Respectfully yours, Stephen L. David.
You have a copy of that for the record, Nick, that email? Thanks. I do, I will. Thank you very much. It's a very well-written email. Anybody else have public comment? I don't see any. Let's approve the minutes of May 18th and July 2nd.
I move to approve the minutes of May 18th, 2015, as presented.
Second.
Motion second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried, unanimous. Let's take up July 2nd.
I move to approve the minutes of July 2nd, 2015, as presented.
Motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay. On the adoption of the agenda, here's the proposal that I intend to be guided by, and we'll see what the board wants to do here, but we're going to be out of here before 9:30, or at 9:30 or before 9:30. So, one way or the other, we are. So, we're going to take up, the only things that we'll take up on the agenda this morning are 9A and B, that's the treasurer. Then we'll take up 14 Alpha, which is the dedication. 14 Delta, actually, I should go back and say that's 14 Andy. Where's Andy Engelmann?
[laughing].
14D, 14E. And then if we can get to it, we're going to do 15A, which is the ratification of the payment of bills so that the city manager feels comfortable. And then we'll have concluding public comment, and I'm going to table the rest of the agenda until the next meeting. Okay? So, with that in mind, pardon me, unless there's an objection, we will, and I know Supervisor Shirk, I'm going to give you a chance, go, go.
Yeah, I would recommend to this board, due to the nature of the day and the events we're going to attend, that 14D and 14E, I would like to put a vote to the Board of Supervisors to postpone this until September 9th. I don't think it'll cause any harm or retribution back to the board. If it is passed, it goes into effect in 2016. I don't think delaying it until September 9th will cause any harm. So, I'd like to propose that so we can adjourn this meeting ASAP.
Okay. Well, then, we'll, there is an objection, so we'll take a motion as to whether or not we take up 14D and E. Is there a motion? Let's do it like this. We'll entertain a motion to either take up or postpone 14D and E.
I'll make a motion.
Go.
I make a motion that we delay discussion and voting on items 14D and 14E until September 9th, when all board members will again be present.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a motion to take up D and E today?
I move to take up items 14D and E as presented today.
Second.
Motion second on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Okay, let's take up item 9A, public hearing. Gail, Treasurer. Madam Treasurer, I think that's how we address you. Good morning. It was fun. Thank you to your staff, by the way, for letting me serve three hours with them.
That was great.
I went home after that, and I now know what they did. Yes, ma'am. Andy?
Could you speak up a little bit?
I will, I'm sorry.
Everything's a little soft out there, and I'm getting old and hard here.
All right. Thanks for letting me know that. But tell them thank you. It was a good morning, but I got to tell you, and you should, staff should know this, I went home right after that, took a nap. Okay. All right, go.
Okay, 9A is, the Carson City Charter states that the Treasurer shall establish and maintain a policy for the investment of the surplus money of Carson City. The Board of Supervisors shall review the policy at least once each year at a public hearing at which public comment is accepted. So, that's what this agenda item is about. I basically worked with the policy from the prior years. You have seen it before, and then I made some changes to it.
Okay.
I went ahead and copied all of you on that email yesterday, or the day before, explaining what the changes were. So, if you have any questions.
Very good. Any questions of Madam Treasurer? Go.
Yes, in my email, which I do appreciate your response, and it was nice to see that you emailed everybody your response to my questions. I wish other staff members and other elected officials would forward all questions that the Board Supervisors proposed to them to all board members. This is the first case in over two years, and I've asked for this repeatedly. You're the first one ever to do it, so I do appreciate it. I did ask if board members could receive the report that you send to the city manager, and if you could elaborate on that, I would greatly appreciate it.
That part of the policy, it only requires reports going to the city manager if the city is investing, is participating in security lending. And as of now, the city is not doing it. They did do it back in the late, like, 2008 or 9...
Gail, something's going on. We can't hear you, so pull it up closer, and I'll pull mine up closer here, too. Try that.
Okay.
Start again to the answer, please.
Currently, the city is not participating in security lending. That is the section of the policy that says that the Treasurer will report to the city manager. So, it just isn't necessary at this time.
Okay. Other questions? Public comment? Motion's in order.
I'll make it. I move to accept the policy as presented.
Motion second on the motion, all in favor, signal. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay. Let's take up the next Treasurer item. 9 Bob, how's that? 9B?
Okay. This one is regarding two parcels that were in the Empire Ranch area. These parcels had been transferred to the city back in 2003, but for some reason, they were still on the tax roll. It was discovered back in 2013, so at that point, the correction was made for interest and penalties up till that point. But unfortunately, it didn't carry through all the way as far as it should, and so then taxes were again incorrectly assessed, and penalties and interest added for the years 2013-14 and 2014-15. So, at this time, I'm asking the board to approve the removal of those taxes and interest and penalties.
Right.
On the fiscal impact, Gail, it shows a decrease of 2120 on one bill and 2072 on the other, but it looks like it should be 2096 on both. Is that correct?
No, not really. It works out, it's 2096 per parcel, but then the fiscal impact is breaking it up in between the two fiscal years. So, if you add the 2120 and the 2072 and the fiscal impact area, it adds to the same total.
Okay, thank you.
This was on a previous agenda item. It was removed prior to the meeting. There was some confusion, was it prior to the meeting or at the meeting? But why was it removed?
It was removed because at the time, I had written it up just asking for the taxes to be removed. I didn't say the interest and the penalties. In my mind, I had looked at it that the taxes were incorrectly assessed, and so therefore, if those are taken off, the interest and penalties would follow. But one of the supervisors asked about the wording of that, and so we went ahead and just pulled the item at that time.
Thank you.
Public comments? Hearing none, motions in order.
I move to approve the removal of taxes and penalties and interest from the 2013-2014 and the 2014-2015 real property tax rolls for parcel 010-592-09, Empire Ranch Divot Road, and parcel 010-602-01, 1466 Empire Ranch Road, in the amount of $20.96 per parcel.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Gail. All right, let's take up 14 Alpha, dedication, 14 Andy, dedication to the right-of-way intersection of U.S. Highway 50 and State Street. Mr. Roder, go.
Morning, Mayor. Supervisors, Danny Roder, Public Works for the record. I'd like to introduce you to a citizen of Carson City, Ruth Barelli. Also, she's our real property manager, recently hired. Comes to us from Indot, highly regarded, and you'll see her name on a lot of things coming forward, real property leases, dedications, that sort of thing. This is accepting 22 square feet at the northwest corner of State and William.
Good morning, Ruth, by the way. Good morning. Welcome aboard. Okay.
That's all I got, unless you've got anything for Ruth.
We do. Go.
Welcome, Ruth. We've worked together in the past. I really appreciate the fact we've been able to steal you away from Indot.
Thank you.
And further questions on this issue? Go.
The dedication is for a driveway or curb? Is that for access into the property or just making a right turn around the corner?
It's for the curb return and handicap ramp. So, right now, it's square, and the curb return is round, so this makes the round happen.
Thank you.
So, you put a square peg in a round hole. Okay. All right. Public comment? Board, motions in order.
I move to approve the dedication of the right-of-way from APN 002-441-12, located at the northwest corner of the intersection of U.S. Highway 50 and State Street.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried, unanimous. Let's take up 14D. This is from the Chair of the Utility Financial Oversight Committee. Ms. Engelmann, come on up. Tell us where we are.
Good morning. I'm going to make this short. I know that you have a busy schedule today. First of all, I want you to know how much I appreciate you addressing this issue today. We were put on a 90-day limitation at May 7th meeting to hold our meeting and report back to the board, and so this is, I think, on the very outskirts of it, but, so I appreciate you taking the time today to do this issue. The Utility Financial Oversight, oh, Andy Engelmann, for the record, I'm sorry. The Utility Financial Oversight Committee met June 30th at 6:00 p.m. in this room, and we reheard the information that was presented to you on May the 7th. We heard from the builders, and a lot of the commercial developers were able to make it. They had met with Public Works and got the capital numbers that they were interested in and were happy, and said essentially what we had presented to you on May the 7th was agreeable to them. And so, our committee voted unanimously to recommend that the water and sewer connection fees be adjusted on a five-year basis, beginning July 1st, 2016, just as staff presented to you at the May 7th Board of Supervisors meeting. The committee also unanimously recommends that the funds received from the connection fees be put in a reserve account to be used only for new capital projects, not maintenance, not operations, nor old debt service. And then finally, once the connection fees are fully implemented, we recommend that they be adjusted annually based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index at an amount not greater than 3%. Now, what the committee discussed was that that percentage amount goes up and down. It's different than inflation for Social Security, for instance, and sometimes is affected by what's going on on the East Coast, which really has no applicability to us in the West, and that's why we put the cap on it of 3%. That concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Questions? Go.
Excuse me. I just wanted to thank you, Andy, for all your service on this committee and for taking the helm. Appreciate it.
You're quite welcome.
On the, your proposal that only the funds collected here can be used for capital projects, is that capital projects in what criteria? Citywide or just sewer? Or is there any criteria for the capital projects that it could be used for?
The criteria is what stands, what it's always been.
Which is it can be used for any capital project, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Under their purview.
And city staff recommended three-year, not a five-year, but the Oversight Committee went with the five-year, if I understand. I was at that meeting.
Yes, I know, and thank you for being there. I was impressed at how much you grasped the information since you've never asked a question or made a comment, so I was, as much as we called for a public comment, but staff gave that option. That was an option. And I think the consultants may have said three years, not so much staff, but the committee voted to go with five years.
And just to clarify, I was there only to observe, not make comments or public comments. So, I was only there to observe. You mentioned at the beginning that you had 90 days since May 7th to bring this to the board, but it is over the 90 days, correct?
Yes, technically, it should have been at the last board meeting, but I think the agenda was so full, and the city manager had just gotten back from his trip, and so, you know, it's, so this is as close as we could get to it.
And it could have been extended because we're already over the 90 days. I'll make that comment. Thank you.
Okay.
One other thing, by the way, although we had, you had told us to address only commercial, and that's what we had told staff, but the agenda, our agenda did include residential at the same time. Staff said they needed clarification. So, all of these numbers were revoted on again, so.
Okay. Wait. Okay. Public comment? Seeing none, motions in order.
I move to accept the report from the Chair of the Utility Financial Oversight Committee for the June 30, 2015 meeting.
Motion and a second on the motion discussion. On the motion discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried, unanimous. Thank you, Andy, and please tell your committee thanks from all of us up here. Thank you. Okay, let's take up echo 14. Man, you know, city manager, you got me in the mode back, and I got to quit, man. I've been retired so long. Okay. E, 14E.
Good morning, Mayor. Board members, David Brquette of Public Works. We would just like to follow up with that, a brief presentation, just to summarize some of the suggestions, recommendations that we're putting forth. We have Karen Johnson from FCS Group, our A consultant, to do the presentation.
Thank you, Karen Johnson, for the record. Just briefly, for each of the water and sewer utilities, we'll go over the proposed schedule of the charges. We've also put together some comparisons of what the charges look like in neighboring jurisdictions, and then we'll look at what the proposed five-year phase-in strategy is.
If I can make a request, we've seen this presentation twice before, so could you just go over the changes, if any?
So, clarification, just showing this up, I think the numbers are still the same, so we can just briefly show that up here. We've gone through the assumptions. On this chart here, this is the comparison of the neighboring jurisdictions. We've added to that, in addition to the connection charges shown on the bottom, potential water rights on the top in the highlighted areas, which is an estimate of what the water rights would be for those properties that don't already have water rights with them. So, no changes there. We've showed this example for 10,000 gallons per day, 50,000 gallons per day, and 100,000 gallons per day. That's just giving the variety of different customers' potential usages. Going through, just looking at that last column, is what the proposed phase-in would be by the last year of the study. Looking at sewer results, same thing, same information here. No changes on the assumptions from where the current charge is to where we're going. Again, the bills for 10,000 gallons per day, 50,000 gallons per day, and 100,000 gallons per day. The phase-in schedule here for year six at the end, what the full charge would be. And then this is the new information that's presented on the discussion of indexing with the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, if not to exceed three years. What we've just shown is a long-term historical projection of what the engineering index has been, and you can see that it has predominantly stayed below the line, some years above the line, and the average over all these year periods is right around 3%. So, it shows that that's an appropriate cap for the analysis. And so, that is the presentation.
Public comment? Anybody? Board?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's, let's...
You have to have a motion, then discussion?
Let's take a motion, then we can do it under discussion. So, motions in order.
Okay.
I move to direct staff to initiate the process of changing the water and sewer connection fees as outlined on pages 11 and 13 of the presentation. And once rates are fully implemented, increase said fees annually for inflation based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index with a cap of 3% per year. The connection fees may only be used for new capital projects of the Water and Sewer Fund and any appropriate debt service for that new capital.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Anybody?
Can I amend my second or add to it?
I don't know how you do that.
How you do that?
I don't know how you do that, but you seconded the motion. Do you want to amend the motion?
I would like to add to the motion.
Well, amend the motion.
Right.
Well, then, I think the proper way to go about it is not to second the motion, but move to amend. Well, I think we need a second on the motion, and then, there's a second now. So, now, you can, well, the record reflects that you rescind your original second. Now, you make a motion to amend, Jim.
Correct. And my motion to amend is that the timeframe is not five years, but three years, as city staff recommends, not as the Oversight Committee recommends. I think city staff has a better knowledge of what is needed, and if you look at how many commercial developments have gone in in Carson City in the last year, there's, we're not going to impact anything, any commercial property that will go in, because nothing's gone in. The only one on the books presently is the Capital Mall project. Otherwise, I see nothing on the horizon. I really strongly suggest this board listen to city staff. Thank you.
There's a motion to amend. Is there a second to the motion to amend? Hearing none. We'll now take up the question on the motion, primary motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't think we have a second on the original motion.
Yeah, we do. Brad, okay. I'm sorry, the record, clear that up.
Yeah.
Because he seconded, and then I asked the record be rescinded as to Jim's original second, and then he made the motion to amend. So, that's where we are right now. We're on the motion to amend. There's no second, as I hear, on the motion to amend, so the motion to amend fails. We're now on the original motion. On the original motion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Carried, four to one. Okay. Now, we'll now take up, that was a good little bit of parliamentary stuff.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. All right, we'll now take up 15A. Item number 15 is just paying the bills, Mr. Mayor. Everybody had a chance to look at the bills? Motion's in order.
I move to ratify the approval of the bills and other requests for payments by the city manager for the period of July 7th, 2015 through August 10th, 2015.
Second.
Your microphone, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Anything else, city manager? Okay. Any public comment? We have now a motion and a second on the ratification of the bills. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay.
Good morning. The item before you is item number 12, an action to approve Amendment 14 to the standard life insurance plan effective on September 1st, 2015. My name is Melanie Brquette. I'm the HR Director for Carson City. I'm asking you to amend the life insurance plan. The largest change you'll see is that employees will be insured on the first day of employment rather than waiting during the time period for their medical insurance to take place. And in addition, we're extending the contract through June 30th, to June 30th, 2017.
Questions in order.
Melanie, this just implements the contract that we've previously done within this amendment?
This is an amendment to the current contract.
But that's in keeping with what we negotiated?
The same terms and conditions of the current contract stay in place. This is just adding enhancements and additional amendments.
Okay.
Melanie, since this policy's essentially been in effect since 1987 with various amendments, have you shopped the market in terms of this being cost-effective for the city?
We have not in the past shopped it. I think before, when we had a broker, we did that. They are giving us a rate pass until June 30th of 2017. At that time, our vision insurance will be up for renewal, and we will look at the market.
I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Public comment? Anybody? Motion's in order. Supervisor Shirk.
I move to approve Amendment 14 to the standard life insurance plan effective on September 1st, 2015.
Motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay. Now, before we table the rest, should we take up some more? Board? I think we're okay. Ten? Nikki?
For the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. And this item is to adopt a resolution accepting the interlocal contract. This is an interlocal contract with Douglas County for our community health nursing program and, which would be added as an adult daycare services or program. You'll see that the fee for July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2016 is 401,211. This is because the adult daycare is not projected to be started right away. We need to, we're thinking probably after the first of the year. And then after, the estimated fee for the years after that are 514,438. And also, within this, it would be to approve the hiring of the director and an acting director when the director cannot fulfill, the position is off-site, which are needed to fulfill the adult daycare scope of work.
And the costs, and the fees, the costs of this program are being paid for by how?
All the expenses are paid for from Douglas County.
Okay. I'm sorry. Supervisor Shirk.
First off, thank you for answering all my questions. I just want to follow up on one. Will you be hiring outside or within the city for these two positions?
We, I will open it up for internal and external. At this point, there are some specific qualifications for the director of the adult daycare, and I haven't seen what qualifications city staff right now have. I know within the Health Department, the individuals that I'm aware of don't have the qualifications, but we'll be opening it up, internal and external.
If you fill these two positions, when the grant goes away, the position goes away. Is that correct?
This isn't a grant. It's a contract. This isn't a grant. It's a contract. So if the adult daycare, the contract is termed, then if there's not another position within the city, yeah, those positions would need to be eliminated.
They will need the contract to renew each year to keep those positions open, basically.
Well, what we're asking is that the contract is renewed automatically, and of course, we do have the option to renegotiate if we need to go in and renegotiate for a higher contract amount, or renegotiate for any other terms, but we are asking that the contract renew automatically, instead of coming year to year to bring this forth.
But they can cancel, too, at any time, the other party?
Correct. Can I also make a, just a notation? It was brought to my attention that on page 10, under the scope of work, it's under 2, CCHH agrees to, under 3.2. That should be NAC 449.4072, instead of the NAC 449.40. So that's the only edit I have.
Okay, public comment? Hearing none, motions in order.
What's the resolution number?
2015R35.
I move to adopt resolution number 2015R35, accepting an interlocal contract in the amount not to exceed $4,401,211 for July 1, 2015, through June 30th, 2016. The adult daycare is projected to be in operation for six months, and an estimated fee of $514,438 per fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2016, with Douglas County, for Carson City Health and Human Services, to provide community health, nursing, and adult daycare services in Douglas County. The contract will automatically renew yearly unless sooner terminated by either party, or either party determines terms of contract needed to be renegotiated. I move to approve the hiring of the director and the acting director, which are needed to fulfill the adult daycare scope of work, and let the record reflect the changes as indicated.
There's a motion and a second on, there's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Aker. Thanks, okay. Yeah, we're gonna do one more, because we're not gonna take up.
Item number 11, and that'll be it today?
Okay.
Good morning, Nancy Paulson, Finance Director. This is the action to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the treasury as of August 11, 2015.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the treasury and the statement of receipts and expenditures through August 11, 2015, per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thank you, Nancy. Okay, let's take up 16, Board Supervisors issues. Anybody? We're gonna be leaving here in a few minutes to go join the procession. And I think everybody knows, we're gonna go down to the Sheriff's Office, right?
We are, Mr. Mayor. We're all gonna proceed from here. We're gonna go south on Stewart. I'm gonna call the Assistant Sheriff. We'll link up with the procession, get in position. Mr. Mayor, you're obviously gonna ride with the sheriff in his vehicle, and the other board members will take their place in the procession.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we got time. We got time. This old man, the one that's speaking here, I gotta use the facility anyway. We're not, I tell you, I tell you what, Jim, you tell me when we wanna be there, and I'll be there, because I'll take as much time. Okay, all right. Anything else from the board? Thanks to the board, and thanks to everybody for your, thanks to the board, and thanks for your consideration today. Thanks to the public. These are some of the things we had to move and get out of the way. It is not a particularly good day, and we will all be contemplating and thinking about the Carl Howell family as we go through the service this morning, and I think that there's also a reception or at between 2:00 and 6:00, is that right, city manager?
2:00 to 5:00 PM in the Carson Nugget.
Okay. And I think, I think it's correct, that after the service is, the Carson City contingent will be released first before anybody else, I think, is what the plan is.
That's my understanding as well.
So if that happens, we can all come back down here first. And the reason for that is, is that, well, there's a reason for it, let me just say that. We're gonna, we're gonna accompany the fire truck back here, and then we can all, if we wanna go see the, be at the Nugget, okay? Anything else going on? Okay.
Closing public comment, Mayor.
Closing public comment. Anybody? Public comment? I don't see any. Unless there is an objection, we're adjourned.